All right, good afternoon, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started here. We do have a quorum. This is a special meeting to handle just two pieces of regular business and hopefully we can get that done in short order. Then we'll talk very briefly about future agenda items. Public comment, we'll go ahead and have public comment now on the agenda items. And then I'll limit public comment until after the committee has finished discussing each one of the items and then I'll open it back up for public comment again. So we're gonna go ahead and have people just come in live as Mr. Weigold sees them. So I guess, John, what we want them to do is put their hand up so that you can recognize the fact that they want to join the meeting.
Correct, and we have, just for the record, we have no emailed public comment thus far. We have one, one comment from, I think it's Elizabeth Bettenhausen, so we'll have Haley bring her in. And followed by Elizabeth, well Christine Heinrichs.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll take the public comment on agenda items at this point. Haley, go ahead and enable, I guess it is, Elizabeth Bettenhausen first, please.
And go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you very much, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent, this is a memo of public comment to you, the Standing Committee on Resources and Infrastructure. From me, it's today Earth Day's 50th anniversary and it's only on 5A in the agenda of your meeting today. And may your deliberation be an integral component of respectful celebrating of Earth Day. I commend the authors of 5A for their expertise in composing material of general ideas in response to state government regulation about the urban water management plan. At the same time, I am unable, in the 24 hours that this material has been available to the public, to find specific information on which to make a sound judgment in the document. For example, the term "technical analysis" is used again and again in the document, but it is never defined. It is accompanied by the phrase "technical efforts," which are not defined either. Any descriptions of instances that might constitute the meaning and content of these phrases are also vague. A second example is the absence of Santa Rosa Creek in the document. Is this a causal inadvertent casual or intentional absence? A third example is the absence of the CCSD's build-out reduction plan in this document. A fourth example is the absence of the "attached bibliography of the RFP for this project," end quote, mentioned on page 6. A fifth example is the omission from the list on pages 5 and 6 of the careful study that was done by an ad hoc committee of the Standing Committee on Resources and Infrastructure. The title of that was Cambria Water Demand Report, updated 10/11/19. It posed many excellent questions of substance that need discussion by the Board of Directors before projections about demand can be made. Why is it not integral to the work of the, on the U, on the Urban Water Management Plan and integral to Board of Directors' agenda in the immediate future? A sixth example is the phrase "supply protocol," end quote, that appears for the first time in Tasks 4, addressing the AWTP. AWTP, what is the meaning of this phrase? Does the meaning of the phrase address some of the issues that the California Coastal Commission has raised over the years with the CCSD's manipulation of San Simeon Creek and Santa Rosa Creek? That is speculation on my part, and I base it on the frequency with which the conversations, future conversations with the California Coastal Commission are mentioned in this document at least eight times. But an element such as in-stream flow study is not mentioned at all. Were I in your elected or appointed position, I would not vote for such a contract. I would not support spending $99,990, not $99, and tens of thousands more for most of Task 5, which is unfunded according to what you do today, recommend today to the Standing Committee on Finance. The guidebook for the Urban Water Management Plan for California is supposed to be finalized by this summer, that's the guidebook. The 2020 UWMP Urban Water Management Plan is due in July 2021. I have never heard of any substantive use made by the CCSD of the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. The Advanced Water Treatment Plant CDP has been in process for a good five years. What's the rush now? Please table this agenda item until it is more comprehensible, compelling, and clearly needed in the next month. I thank you for your deliberation on this, and I ask you, please, never to hold special meetings on such substance as you have the two items before you today and ask the public to participate in any meaningful fashion. Thank you very much for allowing me to comment today.
Hey, thank you. Haley, would you like to bring on our next speaker?
Christine Heinrichs.
Christine Heinrichs, okay.
Hi, this is just a procedural question because I can't see anyone else who's here like Elizabeth. And I wasn't sure how to unmute, but as you called on me, I got the window that allowed me to unmute. So I'm just learning my way through this meeting, thank you.
Okay, very good.
David, I do have one more public comment from Tina Dickson, so I'm going to bring her in.
Great, great. Ms. Dickson, go ahead. Haley, can you unmute her, please?
I'm attempting to.
Okay.
Tina, can you unmute yourself? I'm sorry, it's not allowing me to unmute her.
Well, I'm not sure how she goes about it on her thing. Ms. Dickson, maybe if, maybe if you hover your cursor over your picture, it may allow you to unmute there.
If she's on a laptop, maybe she can just press down the spacebar, that's what my laptop says to do.
Unmute, can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh wow, okay. I, I joined the meeting at a couple of minutes after 2:00, and it seemed from Elizabeth's comments that I was listening to, you were already on 5A, is that the case?
No, on public comment.
Okay, so public comment, I, it seemed that Elizabeth's comments were related to 5A, so I'm not, I wasn't sure. What I want to clear up is something that I read, that was read out by Haley last week. And it was regarding any, the ad hoc committee that was looking, that has been looking into offstream storage or other sites for storage, whatever. And what I said was that whatever it is that you look at or determine that you're going to do at some point, maybe down the road, for additional water, that you would then have to reapply for the licenses that you received last year for the 799 and the 218 respectively in San Simeon and Santa Rosa. I think I was totally misunderstood by Director Pearson and General Manager Weigold. I'm very much aware of the fact that you got new licenses in March of 2019. The Water Board sent me a copy of them. What I'm saying is that for any additional water that you may want to add eventually, whether it's Mr. Warren's reservoir, or if it's whatever it is, it, you'll have to go through a very long process with the Water Board to get the permits. That's what I was trying to say, so I wanted to clear that up. Okay, thank you very much.
Good, thank you, thank you, thank you for your clarity on that one. Yeah, I think, I think we, we are finding that the process for doing anything more than what we've already done is going to be laborious. And we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit under item 5B. All right, so we'll move on to item 5A now. And General Manager Weigold, do you want to introduce this one?
Oh, excuse me, can I just interrupt briefly for, on a bookkeeping thing? There's one attendee who has a phone number, and I wonder if that person could identify him, himself for herself? Those are the phone number, just those are the phone number. Hello?
Last, the last four digits are 7505?
7505.
Area code 415?
Yep.
Yeah, whoever that is, you can go ahead and speak now.
Paul, are you, are you dialed in? Is somebody dialed in on telephone for audio?
None of us are, none of the panelists are. Well, I'll just have to leave it at that then, I'm sorry to have interrupted.
No, that's, that's quite all right, I know you're trying to do a good job on the minutes, and that's part of the minutes.
We pushed them over to the attendee category.
Well, they should be, yeah, they were in the, oh, excuse me. They were in the, they were in the attendee category, the problem is, they weren't, they were just a phone number. So I'll leave it, it'll be recorded as a phone number, thank you.
Yep. Okay, Mr. Weigold.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Agenda Item 5A is discuss and review the Urban Water Management Plan. Consultant, scope of work and cost estimate and project budget reallocations and approve staff recommendations. Staff is recommending the RNI Committee discuss and review the Urban Water Management Plan consultant, scope of work and cost estimate, and review the budget allocations and approve the recommendations to the Finance Committee. The project budget reallocations are provided in the chart below. And when you're ready, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Ray D'Enzo for further discussion and presentation.
Yeah, I think we're ready for Ray, let's, let's go ahead and hear from him.
And we have Pam available also from a finance standpoint.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Board. So in a nutshell, the the scope of work that was, that's before you now, was the result of a relatively long, you know, it was like about a month and a half RFP, RFQ process. So it was, there was sufficient time for those who wanted to bid on the project to bid on it. We only got one bid, and it was by Water System Consulting, which is short WSC, I'll refer to them from now on. Typically, in a situation like this, if, if we don't get more than one, if the, you know, if, if none of the, the participants, if none of the bidders were qualified, then we would go back out to bid. We compared the, the scope of work, understanding and qualifications with the, the RFP that we put out and RFQ that we put out. And WSC meets the qualifications, they meet it pretty well. I believe, I, I recommend that, that we, that, that we hire them for the, for this project, I think they're well capable and would do a really good job. And I personally have worked with them in the past in, in my other careers, but I, I think that they would do a good job, and they have a good understanding of UWMP and the UWMP process, and they've done other UWMPs in other areas in our county. So I, as far as that's concerned, is good. The, the, the difference that we, we did a negotiation with them because the original contract was going to be for about $150,000. And we understand that it wasn't just going to be an urban water management plan, but it was an urban water management plan with the, with the consideration of supporting our CDP work for the SWF. So that was a little, that was the wrinkle, and it was really hard to parse those out. But we did, we were able to, we met with them and we negotiated that a way for, for us to separate out the, the CDP focused work and the, just the UWMP, which is required for, which won't be submitted till next year. But to answer a question that was asked earlier, is the, a lot of the, the UWMP is going to be requiring some of the analysis that's going to be, that we're also going to use for the CDP, and that needs to be done really starting this summer. So it was important that we, we get that analysis done, and we have this consultant on board to, to assist with, with coordinating with Coastal Commission in light of all of these efforts. So we broke up the contract into, we broke it up into UWMP portion and to a, the CDP focused portion. And you can see that in the, the scope of the, the cost estimate and how it was broken up. Tasks 1, 2, 3 is the, for the UWMP effort focus, which is about $75,000 roughly. And then the other portion, the CDP portion, is going to be about $25,000. So that being said, we also looked at the other parts of the scope of the, the Task 5, which we don't think we need their services for now because, and I only say that because the, the coordination that we've done up to now with Coastal Commission, we believe, is a really good starting point. I feel very comfortable that, that, that we have an understanding with Coastal Commission of what they need. But we still do need some help with the technical analysis, hence Task 4 is still, is still needed and we recommend. But overall, I think it's going to be a good project. I think if we approved the project in May before the Board, we can get started on our coordination with Coastal Commission and start getting some of the in-stream flow analysis topic before the Board. And we, we really need to get that, that monitoring investigation started in the summer. So that's why it's really important that we, that all of us get lumped together, and we're doing this early, you know, as opposed to later on in the year, or closer to 2021. But in a nutshell, that's, that's the project where, where we've cut out, we've essentially cut out 50,000, but it, you know, I understand it's still a pretty big scope. It's about, you know, it's a hair under 100,000. But, but I think we're going to get good analysis, I think it's a good value based on even what we did in 2015. The actual UWMP, if it weren't, if it didn't have any issues with, with the, you know, the technical analysis relating to the UW, relating to the CDP, then it would only be about 75,000, which... And, and then the reason why it's, and to answer the, for further answer the question, some people say, well, how come, how come we gotta pay, you know, this much money again to do an update? Well, you know, whenever, every five years, the state always introduces new, new criteria that essentially makes the UWMP a new report. Even though it's, it's more than just checking boxes and updating emails or phone numbers or anything like that, it's not that kind of an update. It's, it's essentially, they introduce new things that require new analysis. For example, the, the supply and demand analysis, that's, that's something new that needs to be done. And even the water supply, the water supply consistent contingency plan, that analysis has also been, we need to do a more robust analysis on that. It's actually considered its own plan now, but it is incorporated into the UWMP. So things like that are a couple of examples that, that are, that have been introduced through new legislation that was released in, that was adopted in 2018 that are, that needs to be incorporated into this new UWMP. So in a nutshell, I think we're getting a good value, even though I understand it's, it's, it is a pretty hefty price tag, but I think it's, we'll get a good project out of it.
Go ahead, Mr. Weigold.
So, Mr. Chairman, so there's two main objectives for this item before the committee today. One is for the committee to review the scope of the work. And then the other is to review for budget adjustment. And I'd like to introduce our finance manager to talk a little bit about why that is in front of you, that part.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So in the Water Fund, we're not requesting a budget adjustment in Water Operations, Department 11. I just have finished working on the quarterly report, and I worked with the Utilities Manager to fine tune exactly, you know, what they've spent through this year, you know, for the first three quarters of the year, and what they project to spend in Water Operations through the end of the fiscal year. And right now, we think there's around $90,000 in surplus that will not be spent. So that is the reason we're not requesting a budget adjustment within Water Operations. In SWF Capital, we will need a budget adjustment because anything thus far for the CDP permitting process has been capitalized as part of the project. So we're following suit with that, and we will need to do a budget, a budget adjustment because it is a capital item. We do have savings in purchasing the used Baker tanks. I believe that went before the Board a couple of months back. And we have originally had budgeted, I believe it was $80,000, and we only spent around 30 of that. So we do have that remaining, oh, sorry, no, we spent 51,000 of that. So we do have the budget remaining in that line item to go ahead and just transfer that budget. So we'll be taking this action next Tuesday to the Finance Committee, providing your committee support this, these budget adjustments. We'll take that to Finance, and then I'll also include it in the third quarter report to the Board at the beginning of May. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so the process here is basically to discuss the scope of work and agree that that scope of work is something that's going to get us the job done that we need under the direction of Mr. Denizo and Mr. Weigold. Of course, they're going to be watching this very closely, but I, I think, let's start with the scope of work, and does anybody have any issues with the scope of work? Ms. Bettenhausen brought up a couple of things that I think are pertaining, and certainly Santa Rosa will be included in, in the scope of work. It may not be mentioned specifically, but updating the UWMP means that anything that's in the UWMP now obviously will be part of the update. She also asked about the ad hoc committee's work, and we would certainly forward the work that they've already accomplished to the consultants to help them along on exactly what the demand line already is, so that, that not go to waste. She wondered why that hadn't come before the Board yet, and the reason for that is that that ad hoc committee had basically decided that they had, they wanted to look at the conservation efforts a little bit more before they furnished their final report, which we will then take to the Board and get that done. So anyone else have anything on the scope of work in particular that they would like to have reviewed more?
Well. Yeah, I had a general question about the, about Task 5, and how that fits into the cost, the cost estimate, and as you have the 99,000 contracted figure and for Tasks 1 and 4. And it looks like a certain amount of Task 4 is obviously directed not just at the UNWP, but at the CDP. Now Task 5 is an additional, is additional work. As I read it, it's focused on the CDP alone. But the, the numbers that I get off the chart suggest that Task 5 is not funded in this contract. In other words, there's an amount of money that will be spent beyond the 99,000, which, and there's a placeholder figure, I noticed that in the chart, of 49,000. But my question is, what is the, what are we approving when we approve the 99,000? What, what, the extent of what work on, in the scope of work, how much of Task 5, if any, is it just up, and then how much of Task 4 is, you know, the, the CDP work is included in this 99,000? A little fuzzy on the, on the boundary there of where this ends and where the new spending begins.
Yes, okay, I can answer that. Am I allowed to answer this right now? Chair, am I allowed?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
So I, yeah, part of the challenge was to, to separate out what exactly was going to be needed for the CDP work as opposed to CDP work that, wait, let me back to the second. Task 4 will, was parsed out because it was very, it was specific to the, the type of support that we need for the SWF CDP effort, that's also going to be crucial to our, to the analysis of the UWMP. The additional CDP work, which is not part of, it, it looks like a placeholder, but we're not approving it. We're not, we're not approving Task 5. And, and that was put there because when, when in, in the RFP, it was very open-ended about what kind of, what kind of CDP support the district was going to need. I'm very comfortable about leaving this out because I don't think, well, only because I think as time has gone on in the last few months, we're able to, I, we, we have a pretty good understanding of what the Coastal Commission has, and staff has already done a lot of this coordination with, with Coastal Commission. So we felt like we could cut this out, that we don't need this kind of support from, from, from the, from WSC in this point. Because if we, if we went in this call, if, if we had no idea what, what the Coastal Commission wanted, then we would, we would feel comfortable about, we would, we would need their, their technical expertise to help us with this coordination. But in the last few months, we've been coordinating with, with the Coastal Commission, and we have a pretty good understanding of what they need, hence we don't really need Task 5 anymore for, for this effort.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just for, for more clarification for Tom. So Tom, if you look at the very far right column of the spreadsheet, so the tasks are broken out for the cost from the proposal. And on the far right is basically what we're getting for each category. So the yellow highlighted section is the total for the UWMP cost part. So the yellow highlighted section is the total for the UWMP cost part of the consultant's work. That's 75,088.
Yes.
In the green area is the amount, total amount for the CDP oriented consulting services. That's 24,902.
Right.
The the combination of both of those gets you to the very bottom in the gray area, total cost budgeted for Tasks One through Four of 99,990.
Right.
So that's the total cost we're proposing. The Tasks for Section Five will be done by staff. So there's zero cost.
Okay. Yeah, I was, that that clears up for me because it seems that once you perform Task Four, once the consultants has performed Task Four, you know, all the technical analysis, it should cover what technical analysis is needed for the permit too, I would think.
The intent of, I defer to Ray on some of this, but the intent on Item Five was was the liaison work back and forth between government entities.
And that will be done by staff.
Correct.
Yes.
And and one thing you have to remember about this, what that may or may not be evident in in this bid. This company, though it's the only one we got, they're the ones that are actually doing the training on behalf of the state. They're involved in the training for all the districts in the state to to teach how the UWMP will be is is to be done. So they're on top of the regulations before anybody else. Advantage to us.
And I also had a couple of quick questions on Section 401 Task Four, a couple of terminology. I notice the terminology AWTP is used, which seems to be referring to the SWF. Is there some problem of possible confusion by using AWTP in that one context? Otherwise, you use SWF, it does SWF in reference to the project. And I have also, it's also actually not Section Four, but it's an earlier task, yes, earlier Section Two, actually, two, two, Water Demand Projections. There's a reference to three scenarios, demand scenarios. A little confused by, one was existing development, assuming not, no change at all. And then development is allowable pursuant to the Water Code, Water Code, Section 350 Declaration of Water Shortage Emergency, which is, I guess, what the regime we're under now. And then the the one that confused me is land use and development based on buildout included in the local coastal plan adopted by the County Assembly of the Subispo, et cetera. Now, does that buildout mean the 4650 cap buildout or full buildout, which means all lots develop? Because I was confused by what's reference to buildout is there?
Yeah, the the LCP has the 4650 number in it, Tom, so that's.
That would be referenced.
And Tom, for the AWTP terminology, that's coming straight out of our own references. So that's why they they used it in there.
Yes, Ms. Dean.
You mentioned previously our our Water Supply and Demand Report that our Ad Hoc Committee was working on. And yes, we stopped because we were waiting for the retrofit and conservation data. Is the part that we have already accomplished useful to this consultant? Or do we need to go ahead and complete our report? And in order to do that, we need to know where are we with the retrofit point back and conference conservation data information? Is it ready for us to continue or do you need us to continue now?
I I think that the report that you've done so far is is excellent and would be helpful to the consultants. So I think we should pass that along to them. And and Ray is shaking his head, yes.
Yeah, yes, I.
And as far as the progress on the retrofit database and everything, Ray, you can bring us up to speed on that.
Yeah, we're we're populating the the database. The database was was set up. We finalized the setup of the database based on the input from Coastal. And and we are starting to do the the nuts and bolts population of it. And that should be done sometime before summer starts.
The report that we did was never brought before the Board or anything. Does it need to be? Does somebody need to go through it and prove our work or is it ready to go the way it is?
Well, we could go ahead and and bring it to our our RNI Committee in May as as it stands as an incomplete report. And then forward that to the full Board for their, you know, consideration and passing on to the consultant. I think that would work.
And FYI, and that we we did update the data in the report to include the 2019 usage figures. So there's a new version of it, still a draft. But we would present that to the committee as the current report if we did it next month.
Yeah.
Let's do that next month. Yeah. I think that's a good idea. Yes, Mr. Nugent, please unmute. There you go.
Yeah, so I just said, it's more of a comments. Last question is, I was reading about urban water management plans and the fact that it sounds like we find ourselves producing not quite enough water to really qualify qualify ourselves to being state mandated to do this. But we happen to have enough ratepayers or users connections that make us do that. So we're we're in a tough spot in the sense that basically we're trying to play a big boy's game with a small deck. And so I'm just wondering, is there anything that we can take out of this process to make it so that the next process is maybe either something we can do in-house or be more prepared to do that in-house? Because it's it is a major, you know, cost and it's something that that seems like because of our size, there might be something that we can, we can kind of optimize if that makes sense.
Good question. Ray, you want to answer that one or?
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, the, yeah, the cutoff is either 3,000 acre feet or 3,000 customers, which we have, you know, 60, you know, 6,500. So and and actually, as far as writing this in-house and compared to having a consultant, I I I thought real hard and I thought real hard about that. Because I, there, most of the, most of the agencies that I've, that that I've come across throughout all of California, they hire a consultant to do this. And and some have written it in-house and and with the help of a consultant. And in this case, my, part of my reasoning of having a consultant for this is because of the 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 scrutiny of the Coastal Commission in this case. The Coastal Commission is wanting to see a pretty robust UWMP that includes a more robust analysis of the SWF. So could we have done this ourselves? I say yes, we could have, but it's the 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 consultant that's working on it essentially acts like a, what a peer review would do. It would, it would, it would add more teeth to the, you know, to the product that we give. It's like, you know, these were done by UWMP experts and that have done several UWMPs and are well familiar with the process. So, yeah, that's, I, I, I'd like to think that the next go around, we'd be able to do more of this in-house.
Cool, that's that's great information. Thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion on the scope of work at this point?
Chairman Pearson, I do have another public comment.
Okay, we're going to wait until we're all, we're done talking about the entire item and then we'll bring that person in, okay?
Okay, thank you.
So now let's talk a little bit about, Tom, you had another comment?
Question about the, how this, we're talking about the past work that's done on Water Demand, Water Demand Management, the 2013 Water Demand Management Plan that's referenced in the in the staff report. Is the new UWMP kind of going to incorporate an update of the Water Demand Management Plan too? It sounds like it is, the way you describe it. Because I, yeah, because I'm impressed by how much more needs to be done this time around than did, than was done in 2015 to to pick up on Ray's point. And that seems to be one of the things that's incorporated into the new review. Is that true?
Yeah, so I don't know if I said this in the in the last meeting, but back in 2015, the the consultant that did the the UWMP was a water conservation consultant because it was very water conservation focused. You know, they were the ones that wrote that Water Demand, Water Demand Plan. And so in this case, you know, we, you know, we have, the critique about this is we have water conservation dialed in. And the, I believe the the community of Cambria is doing a really good job with with their habits and 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 implementing some of the the water demand conservation that we've implemented from that time until now. So, so this is one of those things that, you know, if 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 there weren't any other issues, we probably could have done this in-house. But, you know, now with the, now instead of demand focus, it's now more supply focus where we need analysis on the supply and incorporating the SWF in this.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good, thank you. All right, any comments on the reallocation? The Finance Committee is going to be able to go over this in some detail. So I think unless somebody has some real objections to just reallocating some money that's already in our budget, which is what's being done. I think we leave a lot of that discussion to the Finance Committee and move on. Anybody have any comment on the finance portion of this item? All right, seeing none. Haley, we will go ahead and take the comment from the public now.
Yes, it's Tina Dickerson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for taking my comment or comment. Ray, in listening to your report, you say that you have been coordinating with Coastal. You're getting an understanding of what they need. My, my question would be this. Coastal has made it very clear since July of 2014 what they need. That was in the ISMD and and future reports. So and comments that they and and advice. And I'm not understanding why now we're still having to figure out what it is. So what is it when you say you're coordinating with them and you're understanding what they need? Can you please tell me or the public and members of the of the staff and and the RNI Committee just exactly what it is now that you're understanding what they need when they've been asking for it for such a long time? That's one question.
Okay, what's your other question?
I thought I'd get an answer first, okay? Then, and then the other would be on the supply and demand. I know that Ray attended, I think, the DWR's workshop on that, on Water Supply and Demand. I had, I don't, I haven't heard a report back from that workshop that you attended. And then the other item that I want to bring up very quickly is on the first page of 5A under Scope of Services. By the way, I've been trying to get a comment in forever and I don't know what's wrong with my my computer or whatever, but I couldn't get it in. Under Scope of Services, I'm curious about this. For example, one of these new regulation requires a more robust water shortage contingency plan, which in this round includes a more detailed water supply and demand assessment. This assessment will feed into a new annual water shortage assessment report, which will be due every July starting 2022. These technical analyses will also include a more complete analysis of the sustainable water facilities contribution to the water supply. The supply protocol analysis of the SWF is a crucial portion of the district's effort to obtain a regular CDP. So can anybody explain to me how we get any more, an additional, additional supply of water from other than when we're in a stage three? How how has that, does that change? Because any additional supply beyond the 799 is not possible. Can someone please, I don't understand that at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray, would you like to go ahead and answer what you can?
Okay, so, so in light of the, I guess, in light of how many answers. So in light of understanding what the Coastal Commission needs, I think it's, it's more of, it's more of an open communication as to working with them to to get a, to get what they need. So for example, I know that forever, it seems, they they've been wanting an in-stream flow analysis. And actually, my my predecessor has brought that issue up back at that time too. And the problem is, is that the, there's a lot of reports that are out there that are related to in-stream analysis, okay? And it's very, you know, and there's, it's little snippets here and there. You know, with with different motivations, you know, some are focused on fish, some are focused on the groundwater relation to to pumping, okay? So all of that is very useful. And I think that there was a misunderstanding at the time of like, well, we got it. You know, we have everything that we need. I don't understand why why Coastal is still asking for this. And it seems like that's what what they're always asking for. What the the understanding that I think we're we're getting to is that that we are now getting to the point where we can connect the dots between all of those. And and an in-stream flow analysis does still need to happen. And I and I'm going to guess that the summer is when we're going to need to do that, okay? I haven't verified that because we, we, we need to have a conversation with with Coastal this summer very specifically on that. And I don't want to just say, okay, we'll do an in-stream flow analysis. This is what an in-stream flow analysis is. Well, it has to be an in-stream flow analysis that the that the Coastal Commission wants and needs. So, yeah, we've been talking about this up until today. And yet, what I do plan to do is that when we, you know, this is about leading into the the next conversation, is that we need to have a, we need to to break out all the details, put it in front of them and say, this is the, this is what we have currently. Because I, what I believe is, I don't think Coastal Commission knows everything that we have, okay? We, we have all of these little snippets here and there, very various components of an in-stream flow analysis, all of which can be useful, but it's not useful on its own, okay? And so, so yes, you know, that conversation has started. That's the understanding that we have. And I think we, we have a good foundation to move forward with it and and have in and get a, get the analysis that that we need and that they need so that we can have a really good project. And yes, I, the the SWF would be considered a new supply source in this, in this definition. Okay, you know, that's, I'm not here to debate that, but but it is considered a a new supply source. And that's why it needs to be, all in-stream flow analysis needs to be in that context. And so in a nutshell, I, you know, to try to, to try to answer the question that needs, you know, a UWMP and CDP analysis is, you know, hopefully, we'll talk about it again in a couple of months and we'll see where we're at. But that's where, that's where it is. And I think the other question was the, you know, the, the, the difference of the annual, the the water supply and demand analysis here is that they're going to need to analyze every, every water source. And and not only that, you know, there, in the other part is the the water shortage contingency plan, you know, there's going to be various levels of alerts that need to be established. All of that, those things are new. Those are the things that I learned in that, in that UWMP conference that I went to. So because it was, it was two parts. It was the actual annual supply and demand assessment. And also the second part was the actual UWMP guidance book. So, so those are the things that that we learned, that I learned from it, that seemingly simple tasks, but there's a lot of, a lot of discussion that needs to take place because it's, it's not a simple, it's not a simple solution. So, but, yeah, hope that was clear.
Okay. Thank you. We do have another member of the community that would like to speak, Haley, I think. member of the community that would like to speak, Haley, I think, Ms. Heinrich.
Hello. Yes.
Yes, Gordon.
Okay, yes, Mr. D'Enzo. I understood from your presentation that that, well, $25,000 of this approximately $100,000 is directly attributable to to the emergency water supply project, which you're calling the S W F. But then, as you elaborated, you said that this, the entire amount would not have needed to be spent. It could have been done in house were it not for the higher level of documentation needed by the S W F. So in a sense, this $100,000 then is really another cost of the E W S S W F that I'd just like to clarify that.
Well, what what it is, is 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 we have to do this revised or actually, it's really a new urban water management plan. And that would cost us $75,000 if we had the S W F or not. So what we're what we've done is we've tacked on another 24,000 onto the consultant's work order to to help us with the technical analysis that we still need to do on the E W S S S W F in order to satisfy the regulatory agencies, including adding that technical analysis into the new urban water management plan. Did I get that about right, Ray?
Yes, that's that's all correct. It's, you know, if if there if there were no S W F, if that was already approved and we already had the CDP, the regular CDP for that, then this would only be about 75,000.
Okay.
Except that's not what you just said. You said that it could have been done in house had were it not for the greater requirements of the S W F. I and it's nice to spend $75,000 and not have to do it in house. But I'm just clarifying what you said, which was that.
No, we couldn't do it in house in any case. We would have to go outside to get the urban water management plan done.
So he misspoke? Is that what you're saying?
I guess.
I think, okay, yeah, I think what I said was we could we would have been able to, we would we would consider doing this in house. If we didn't need that that extra level of review that that coastal was that that coastal was needing. And so, yeah, I I was, there would have been a possibility we could have done this in house. But I, you know, I.
So, yeah, you could have.
It was a possibility. Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Nugent. You're good. Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve this scope of work and adjustment to the budget and send it on to the finance committee? Mr. Gray, I think, tried to say something there, but I didn't see anything. I didn't hear anything.
I still move. I still move.
We have a motion and a second.
All second.
I'll go ahead and do everybody unmute. Okay. And any objections to sending it forward? Hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so we have a five to nothing vote to approve this and send it on. All right, we'll move on to item number 5B, which is a report basically from the ad hoc committee on off site storage possibilities. And we put this on the agenda because we were having a meeting on Monday and we did have our meeting on Monday. Unfortunately, Mr. Nugent was unavailable. But Jim Webb and I met for almost an hour and chatted about the possibilities. And, you know, the only real place we got to, I think, is is the fact that we said, you know, until we find out exactly what the E W S slash S W F is going to produce for us and how that lands in the overall scheme, there's really not much more we can do. And and so we applaud the fact that the staff is going ahead and and trying to get that done where where the the E W S will be running and we'll get an inflows in stream flow study done possibly this summer, which is currently what Mr. D'Enzo is is working on. So Jim, my, have I got it about right or would you like to add some some more to that?
I'll add a little perhaps. I think that we the course that we've gone through in the in the subcommittee is to communicate with Supervisor Gibson about regional plans and then to present some of this material to Tom Luster at the coastal commission and ask for his views on it. And I think I think, Ray, you have it just right that looking at an in stream flow study is probably at this point, the the biggest stumbling block to gaining greater approval from the coastal commission on these plans. And I think in your scope of work where it's spelled out that they're going to do some studying of the actual production, useful production for the town provided by the emergency water supply machine. I think it's extremely important that before we go on talking about other storage options or off site or off stream, we have some idea of our capability to actually run the machine you got and how much water ends up going to the well field as opposed to going downstream. I think you you find that's a major piece of data that you're going to need to have in talking about the in stream flow study and and for the discussing, I think, the life cycle of Steelhead. It seemed to me that Ray, you you spoke that you you've been in contact and communication with people up in the at the coastal commission. Is is that Brian? Is that the one you're communicating with or? Oh, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Yeah, yes, both Brian and Tom. Brian and Tom, yes.
And does that is our character or is my characterization of where we are at the end of of these meetings jive with what you're hearing?
Yes, yes. I, yeah, the only thing that I the only thing that I think needs more clarification is that the the off channel stream or the off channel reservoir is is a different project that actually addresses a different need in our water supply. So the the S W F would 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 address drought type situations. Whereas the off stream would address situations where we have normal to above normal rain. So they're 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 hedges against each other. You know, it's, I mean, in in an ideal world, it would be good to have both. But I understand that it's hard to to do both. But.
Expensive to do both. I mean, you know, to store five, six, 700 acre feet of water and process it through the machine. And that's a whole nother capital project that we're not even close to. But anyway, I agree with Dave's summation about where we are. I get the sense coastal is eager to work with us. And I get the sense from Ray and John that that you guys are getting your ducks in order to try to give them what they need to to buy off on this. So I have no more to add.
All right, thank you. Yes, Ms. Dean.
So can you clarify something for me? Is this subcommittee only looking at off stream, off site water storage? Or are you also looking at additional water storage within our distribution system such as enlarging the Stewart Street tanks or or putting in more more water storage tanks within our distribution system? Or are you only looking at off stream and off site storage?
Off stream, off site is what we were tasked by the board to do. So that's basically what we're doing.
Okay.
But that that might include a tank that would be off site, off off, you know, off stream, so to speak. Okay, we have talked about tanks as well as reservoirs. So, yeah.
You would have to pump a well to fill a tank, though, wouldn't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it would be the same process as with the reservoir. We'd have to go back to the licensing people and see if we could figure out a way to get because if you're if you're going to store off site, you have to get permission to do that anyway. So we'd have to go through that that whole process. So.
Which would be very time consuming, I imagine.
Yes, I mean, you know, getting getting the license that we currently have apparently took three and a half years or something like that. So, yeah, it's they're very busy up there, according to them.
Thank you.
All right. That's our report and we will move on to future agenda items. Does anyone have anything that they really want to get on our agenda for May? Now's the time to speak. So far, I think we'd like to have reports from the ad hoc committee, a report from the ad hoc committee on the demand, water demand study that you did. I don't know. In fact, I doubt that you guys are going to have anything to do on the informational videos that you were working on. I Brad, until you get until you're able to move around and stuff, I don't know that that's going to be possible, right?
Not really.
Okay, so we'll wait on that one. Any anybody else have anything that they want to make sure we talk about at our next meeting? All right. Do we have anything? Anybody in the public? Haley, one more time, any other comments?
We don't have any other comments at that this time.
Okay. All right, then I will adjourn the meeting. Have a good week, everybody. Thank you.